Good evening. Welcome to the July 20th, 2015 Troy City Council Meeting. We're pleased this evening to have Vincent Messina from the Woodside Bible Church with us to lead us in the invocation. So if you would please rise for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after. Good evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful summer day you've given us. We thank you for the measure of health that is ours by your grace. We live in challenging and difficult days, and Father, we pray that as this council comes together to conduct the business of this great city, we ask, Lord, that you would give them knowledge and wisdom and discernment. Father, that we might live peaceably in this city, and Father, that we might continue to enjoy the blessings that you give us each and every day. We thank you and we praise you for your glory and honor. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. They will call Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here. All present, our first order of business this evening is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 is on behalf of the City of Troy Employees for Casual for Cause Program for the months of March and April 2015. Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart will tell us what it's about. Good, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure tonight to again present a check for a very worthy organization. Employees raise money for March and April for Casual for a Cause. And tonight we have Megan Phelps, not who we thought was coming. On behalf of the Rainbow Connection, we have $585 for the Rainbow Connection, and she might want to tell us a little bit about what it is.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having us here. The Rainbow Connection is a Vemishkin nonprofit that makes dreams come true for Michigan children with life-threatening illnesses. We serve the entire state of Michigan. We're founded in 1985, and to date, we have provided wishes to more than 2,800 children. And it is only because of employees like yours and the members of these communities that help us make these dreams possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks to the employees. Thank you very much. C2 is SafeBilt Scholarship Presentation, and Paul Featherstone from SafeBilt Building will do the presentation along with Cindy Stewart. Good evening.
Once again, we have two very worthy young people that are going to receive the SafeBilt Scholarship. Ellen Zhang is going to receive the $500 scholarship. She's a 2015 Troy High School grad. She graduated with a 4.5 GPA and successfully completed 22 Advanced Placement classes. She was accepted at Harvard, and she's going to start her college career in the fall. In addition to her excelling in high school academics, she was active in a number of extracurricular activities, including National Honor Society, Advisory Board of the Teen Inc. Magazine, Science Olympiad Team, the marching band, Summer Research Laboratory, Writing Club, Biology Club, and the track team. Ellen's volunteered at the Brookdale Nursing Home and the Chinese Association for Greater Detroit, and the leaders from both of her volunteer efforts have called her remarkable and extraordinary. She's received many awards in a variety of subjects, including science, writing, and language, and general academic awards. She's one of three high school seniors from Michigan to win the 2015 U.S. Presidential Scholar Award. Curtis is a 2015 Athens High School grad. He graduated with a 4.5276 GPA, the highest ever at Athens. In his four years, he successfully completed 17 out of a possible 23 Advanced Placement classes, and he also was accepted to Harvard. Didn't know each other before this, but they might see each other on the campus. Curtis not only excelled at high school academics, he was also active in a number of extracurricular activities, including National Honor Society, Model UN, Project Lead, Math Club, Student Advisory Board, competitive swimming, and cross-country. He's the founder and president of Charity Cross Continents, a group dedicated to helping needy children in Africa and South America. For his first project, they deliver gently used shoes to children in Africa. After gaining support from the other Troy schools by running shoe drives, he coordinated the collection of 1,650 usable pairs of shoes that they boxed and shipped to Tanzania. Curtis was chosen as a distinguished finalist in the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, and that program was designed to emphasize the importance our nation places on service to others and to encourage all young Americans to contribute to their communities. Curtis has been called a natural leader by his teachers and counselors, providing a model example of service to others and genuinely cares about letting those all around him do their best.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just want to take one moment to say thank you very much for the partnership we have in this. It's a joint effort for the scholarship, and I don't think it could have gone to any two better students at all. So I'm very honored to be here today.
Thank you.
Ellen?
On behalf of SafeBilt and the City of Troy, we offer you the scholarship of $500.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. Curtis, you also, sir. Thank you very much. You're both outstanding, and please accept the scholarship for $1,000 from SafeBilt and the City of Troy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank SafeBilt especially for promoting such an amazing endeavor. I think it's a great thing that, you know, in school, we can pursue academic excellence, we can do athletics, we can do the arts, but the one thing that'll never be enough of is helping others, and I think it's amazing that SafeBilt is encouraging within our city to such a high extent. I think it really shows what a great community Troy really is. So thank you to everyone here, and just thank you to SafeBilt.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Curtis. Thank you.
And I guess I would definitely like to thank SafeBilt, but I would also like to thank Troy definitely, that education system here is unlike any other, and it's because of the education here that we have opportunities such as these scholarships. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you to SafeBilt. Thank you for representing our city and making us look good. Thank you so much. Thank you. There are no carryover items this evening, so we will move to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. E1 is a public hearing for rezoning application, file number Z746, the proposed Troy Fire Station Number Four, which is on the north side of Maple, east of John R. With the presentation, it says here by Brent Savadon, but I see...
We're swapping them out tonight.
We're swapping them out, so... Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ben Carlisle, Carlisle Waterman Associates. I'm here to introduce a proposed rezoning on behalf of the City of Troy for two city-owned parcels on Maple Road for the future redevelopment of Fire Station Four. A little background on the two sites, they are adjacent parcels located on Maple Road, just east of John R. Again, the future use of the property is for the construction of the new Fire Station Number Four. The first parcel for rezoning is approximately 1.1 acres in area. It includes split zoning. The western portion is currently zoned Neighborhood Node, and that's where the fire station is actually located. The eastern portion of that parcel is zoned R1E, Single Family Residential, and that's currently improved with the fire station parking lot. The second parcel is adjacent to the east. It is 0.5 acres in area, and it is currently improved with a single-family detached home. This parcel was recently purchased by the city for the intended purpose to include it as part of the Fire Station campus. When considering a rezoning, there are a number of factors to consider, and one of the most important factors is what the master plan states for this particular property. In the 2008 adopted master plan, the site was designated as part of the John R and Maple Road Neighborhood Node District, so a proposed rezoning to Neighborhood Node would be consistent with the master plan. A second factor to consider is the surrounding land use and zoning of the parcel. To north, south, and east is R1E, One Family Residential, and they include single-family homes and a vacant parcel. To the west is Neighborhood Node, which includes both general retail and service. A fire station approximately to single-family neighborhoods as well as commercial properties would be consistent and compatible with the surrounding area and zoning for the parcel. There are five standards to consider with the rezoning as set forth in the zoning ordinance. I've addressed most of these already. However, I do want to highlight number three and number four, which is the impact on public services and facilities, as well as the impact on public health, safety, and welfare. A fire station is a public good and a public necessity, and so three and four are strongly met as part of the rezoning. We do find that the application does meet the five standards for the rezoning. As part of the application, the city did explain a letter of justification for the rezoning. They hit four points. I've stressed these already, but the four points are that the node is consistent with the surrounding zoning, the node would be consistent with the master plan, fire stations must be strategically located in the community based on travel distance, as well as the existing Fire Station Four is in need of replacement due to obsolescence. It should be noted that the city is currently working on a site plan and architectural design. We have not got to the point yet where it is finalized. However, if a rezoning is approved, any future development would require a full compliance with the zoning ordinance Neighborhood Node requirements, as well will require a full site plan review by the Planning Commission, which will be open for public consideration. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this matter. It was held on June 23rd, 2015. At that time, there were public comments were received. There were two adjacent property owners to the east that own single-family homes who expressed strong concerns in regards to the rezoning. Of particular importance to them was impacts of landscaping, lighting, buffering, noise, overall impact on the property, as well as property values. They are in the public, they're here to the public tonight to answer any questions that the council may have and/or express their concerns during the public hearing portion. The Planning Commission did consider their comments, took their comments into consideration, and ended up voting seven to nothing to recommend approval of the rezoning. Based on the direction of the Planning Commission, staff went out and met with the property owners on site a week after the public hearing. Again, they walked the site with the two property owners. They discussed the issues of noise and buffering and landscaping, and the city has agreed to work with those property owners as part of the site plan development process and include them in that process moving forward, so they'll be involved in every step along the way. So in summary, we do find that the proposed rezoning to Neighborhood Node is in compliance with the master plan, is consistent with abiding commercial and residential properties, and does meet all the five rezoning standards as set forth in the zoning ordinance. We do understand and respect the concerns of the neighbors. We have met with them. We agree to work with them throughout the plan, site plan development process, as well as the fire station. The fire department agrees to work with them as well. So with all those factors considered, we do recommend approval of the proposed rezoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from council for Mr. Carlisle? Of course. Thank you. I will open this public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening. Please come forward and give us your name. Good evening. If you could use the microphone, please.
My name is Lena Teresnu. I live in House 2155. It's my house. It's next to the house the city buy for making big fire station, big place. And the first time we come here, we meet with, for this project, we just ask them to switch the project, the parking lot, to put next to our house, not the fire station. Just flip the project, and they promised us to do this. I don't know how this is working after this, but... And to build something nice between my house and the parking lot, because my house is just six foot from the wall, I think, to build. And next to the wall is the fire station building, not parking lot. And you think one house close is...
Okay, I think we understand the issue there.
Yeah, we asking just for this and the value of the house, because when we buy this house, my house was next to the house, not next to the fire station. We know now the value is going down if they build the fire station there. We know it's for everyone, but need to fix something, and for us who live next to the fire station, and for taxes and for value of the house. We like that neighborhood. We have six, more than six years living there, and we pay taxes, and it's not low taxes a lot, it's almost $4,000 for that house there. Just asking for help and think about they live people, live kids.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Please come forward and give us your name, please. Good evening.
My name is Natasha Duda. The first lady to talk is my brother's house, and the second house is my house, and it's almost so close. You know, everyone buy the dream house for more privacy and more, relax, and because everyone working hard. Now, I can't say we not want this fire station there because it's good to have it, but the time we buy, we say, oh, it's good to have, well, thanks God, but not it's so close, you know? And now it's close, so close, if you do something better for us, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this evening, or this item this evening? Mr. Savadon, did you want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did, we did meet, as Ben indicated, we did meet with both neighbors on the 30th of June. Very helpful meeting. As an example, I went in there thinking that they would want a very high fence to provide privacy, and they indicated that was actually the opposite of what they wanted. They wanted more open space, more landscaping. So it gave Dave and myself, Mr. Robertson and myself, an opportunity to hear them, and as I indicated, their input will be considered during the site plan design process. We're still in the process of hiring an architect. One of the issues that they feel very strongly about is the relationship of the building to the property line. What they would like us to do is flip the building with the property line, and what we indicated to the neighbors was that we would, we would consider that. It's really, it's really a design issue that's related to the turning radius of the trucks, but we would look at doing what we could and taking a best effort to provide parking between the fire station and their property. We're so preliminary now that I, I think she said I promised, what I promised to do is involve them and take up our best effort towards incorporating their input and their concerns into the design process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item this evening? I would just indicate to the residents that this is strictly a rezoning issue this evening, and we will be making a decision later as to the site plan and what will be put on that site and where it will be put. So tonight is just for rezoning, so we'll be talking to you in the future about the I'm going to close the public hearing and return to the table for discussion. Councilman Teetz.
When will the site plan hearing or discussions? If I were in their shoes, I'd like to have a ballpark. Is that November? Is that a February discussion? A lot of people looking around.
See, a lot of heads shaking. They don't know. So why don't you just put me on record as saying this is, this is July, so they're going to get the architect hired around August and then take about six months at least, right, to get site planned done and get the, you get the site planned before council, before the Planning Commission, before all the drawings are done, right? So I'm going to say this winter, spring, or summer.
Okay, yeah, you're on record.
I'm not being facetious. I mean, you get the idea, right?
Yeah, but it's sometime next spring, summer-ish. Okay, so if I were the residents, I would certainly want to know that, so I'm not calling tomorrow, but certainly I would want to be engaged and so forth.
But understand, Councilmember Teetz, they can call as often as they like, but it's on us to contact them when the need arises as well. So if the onus is not on them, it's on us.
Any other discussion from council? Councilman Henderson.
Just one point with regard to placement of the facility, and it was brought up in a previous meeting, that the current fire station cannot be shut down and eliminated before we start construction on the other. So that does present a little bit of a problem. Just wanted to make that point.
Any other discussion? Would somebody like to move the resolution? Councilman Pennington.
I'd like to move E1, Public Hearing, Rezoning Application, File Number Z746, Proposed Troy Fire Station Number Four, north side of Maple, east of John R. Section 25 from R1E, One Family Residential, District NNC Neighborhood Node C District as printed.
Support. Moved by Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve E1 as printed in the agenda this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll look forward to talking to you and meeting with you in the future. So thank you for coming tonight. Next is E2, a public hearing, zoning ordinance text amendment, File ZOTA 247, Oil and Gas Extraction, with a presentation by Brent Savadon, Planning Director. Good evening again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members. This item was initiated by the Planning Commission with the intention of regulating the oil and gas extraction facilities in the city, including fracking, and another one of their goals is to protect single-family residential properties. They held, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item, June 23rd, and recommended approval unanimously, nine to zero. The zoning ordinance presently does not regulate oil and gas facilities. It's regulated by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, which I'll refer to for the rest of the presentation as the MDEQ. Presently, it's permitted anywhere in the city, provided the site is at least 450 feet from a residential building. I should note that the MDEQ may reduce the requirement following a public hearing with the consent of all owners involved within 450 feet, or if there's no reasonable alternative for the location. And what we did is we took this information and with the assistance of the IT department, we mapped all the properties in the city that were located at least 450 feet from residential buildings, and the green areas shown on the map are those properties. Now, this only shows potential sites. It's not inferring that Beaumont Hospital, or Whitechapel Cemetery, or Oakland Mall, or the Troy Oakland Airport are going to have oil and gas extraction facilities anytime soon. It's simply to show really the scope of the properties involved. Now, with all that being said, there is a gas well today at the MSU Management Center at 817 West Square Lake. This is a photograph you see here. It's been in operation, I believe, since 2003. This map was taken off the MDEQ website. To give you a general idea of the scope of oil and gas well facilities in the southern peninsula of Michigan, you'll notice the swath here of the band that stretches across the northern part of the peninsula from basically Manistee all the way to Alpena. There's a significant number of both oil and gas wells up in that area, and if you look at Oakland County down here, you'll notice there's not a lot of activity. Again, there's one facility in Troy, and there's really not a significant number in Oakland County compared to the rest of the state. Now, if we look at hydraulic fracturing, or fracking as it's known, these are active applications, an active permit since 2008. You'll notice Oakland County right here, there's no fracking active in the county. Most of it is up here and as well as in the northern thumb area. Conversations with representatives of the oil industry indicate that we're not going to see fracking in Oakland County. The geology just doesn't lend itself to it, so it's really something we're not going to see. In terms of the revisions that have been proposed by the Planning Commission, it's proposed that oil and gas extraction facilities be permitted in the IB district only as a special use, and would require at least five acres in size for the parcel. There'd also be required increased setbacks based on adjacent uses and zoning. I'll get into that in a second. There's also a proposed requirement for extensive fencing and landscaping, as well as limiting the lighting on the site. All applications would have to adhere to strict nuisance and performance standard requirements, including submittal of a detailed operations plan. This is what the proposed schedule of uses looks like. We would simply add oil and gas wells and oil and gas development, and you notice the S in the IB column indicating that would be permitted by special use approval in the IB district and only the IB district. In terms of additional setbacks in minimum lot sizes, there's a proposed requirement that oil and gas sites be located at least 300 feet from any right-of-way, 500 feet from any residentially zoned or used property, or any property used for a religious facility, a public or a private school, or a hospital. Also a requirement that it be 100 feet from any property line, and as a reminder, it requires a minimum lot size of five acres. So for the Planning Commission public hearing, we had, we prepared this map showing all properties zoned, that were zoned IB and five acres or greater. Notice the number of properties since the Planning Commission public hearing. So this is what the Planning Commission saw. Since that time, with the assistance of the IT department, we were able to, pardon the pun, Mr. Mayor, we were able to drill down... No one laughed. I'll stop. I'll stop. We were able to really add the setback requirements and create a more accurate depiction of available properties, available sites for these potential facilities. So the green shows the actual site areas in the city if the provisions are approved. There's approximately 40 properties of varying sizes. You notice the scope changed from here to here. And I want to, I do want to be clear, the Planning Commission was aware that the setback requirements were not included in this map. That was made clear to them. So this is a table summarizing the differences between the MDEQ requirements by the state on the left and the requirements that I just went over. Again, state requirements are only that they're permitted by right in any zoning district, provided they're at least 400 feet from residential buildings. During the process that was going before Planning Commission for consideration, we had numerous emails and phone calls, and also had people attending the Planning Commission public hearing who wanted to discuss the differences and the similarities between Troy's proposed language and the language that was recently adopted by Rochester Hills. And in Rochester Hills, oil and gas wells and facilities are permitted in the I district by right. Ours is by special use. There's no minimum size requirement in Rochester Hills where we have a five-acre requirement. In terms of setback, and that's really one of the largest discrepancies, is... In terms of setback, and that's, that's really the, one of the largest discrepancies, is they have a requirement that facilities be at least 1,000 feet from residential religious facilities, schools, hospitals, childcare, childcare centers, and parks. Our, our requirement for similar uses is only 500 feet. It was our feeling, and we, we vetted this with the city attorney, that the 1,000-foot requirement was, could lead to, to the provisions being exclusionary. We thought they were somewhat excessive, so we, we went with 500 feet. There's, there's a fence requirement in both, in both communities. And in terms of landscaping, Rochester Hills does not require any landscaping. We require an evergreen every 10 feet and a 25-foot landscape buffer. So city council, the planning commission, and the city manager, we share the same interest, which is to find a balance between protection of single-family neighborhoods, as well as, protection of single-family neighborhoods from the negative impacts of, of oil and gas facilities, without being exclusionary. We still have to let these, these facilities, um, be permitted subject to standards. Therefore, city management recommends that city, city council conduct the public hearing this evening as scheduled, and then schedule a joint city council and planning commission study meeting on September 14th at 6:00 PM. To ensure a balanced discussion of the topic, the city will invite two individuals with differing views to attend the joint meeting and make brief presentations. And those two individuals are Jim Nash, who's the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner, and Hal Fitch, who's the chief of the oil, gas, and mineral section of MDEQ. And where it's felt that with this exchange of information at the joint meeting, it'll assist city council and the planning commission in fully understanding all the issues related to the regulation of oil and gas extraction. This will help us move forward in a direction with a better understanding of the issue. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Savinant? I think you covered it all so far, so, thank you. I will open the public hearing and call on Manish Baxi to be our first speaker, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I live in Troy as well. So here is what I understood so far from the information which was presented, is we don't have a problem, but we need to solve the problem. Pretty interesting situation to be in. And just because Rochester Hills has similar ordinance and regulations, we need to follow suit on it. In my opinion, one of the well-known studies recently done by a respected organization, the EPA, and they concluded that there is no major or systemic connection between contamination of water and fracturing, hydraulic fracturing, otherwise known as fracking. So personally, I think we are trying to solve a problem which doesn't really exist, number one. Number two is let's understand what we are trying to do here. My focus, as a businessperson in the community, as well as people I know, is we want to create a very friendly environment for attracting businesses. And energy is one of the key ingredients anywhere. So wherever energy is plentiful and the businesses feel that energy is going to be easily accessible to them at a very affordable price, they're going to be more interested. And if you start passing regulations where the business community starts wondering, it's like, okay, is this really a friendly place to do business? Is this going to look out of my interest? I think we need to look at that. It provides jobs for people, and we want to help, help Troy community keep growing as a community to attract business people. And obviously, the quality of environment we want here. So my suggestion would be very simple. Let's not try to solve a problem which doesn't exist and focus on the other issues. And I assume there are enough issues for Troy City to look into. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. John Griffin, our next speaker. Good evening, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I see you have a clock there. That's very helpful. I'll be less than three minutes. John Griffin, I work for American Petroleum Institute in their Lansing office. Work on legislation, regulation, PR, things like that. As was stated in the presentation, there's not much activity in Troy. There's only two permits right now in the whole Oakland County for drilling out there. And as far as we know in the industry, no one is leasing for oil and gas activity. We did meet with the staff. We want to thank them. The city manager and his staff were meeting with us last week to talk about our concerns. There are 1,200 townships in this state, over 500 cities and villages, 83 counties. And a lot of them are alerted and asked to regulate oil and gas and hydraulic fracturing and things of that nature. Really, our preference is to have a strong statewide program. The DEQ is widely recognized all around the country for having a strong regulatory program for oil and gas activity. That being said, we'll be glad to participate in any kinds of discussions. The DEQ and the staff on the, on the proposal, I am working on an industry legal response as requested that would address the issue of private property rights versus exclusionary zoning. So I hope to get that to you soon. And, uh, other than that, look forward to giving some construction, constructive, uh, information and, uh, conversation with the, with the staff. And I put down September 14th on my calendar, and I appreciate you taking the time to meet with DEQ, if that in fact is the plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That resolution would have to pass this evening to have that meeting, so we'll find out. Nicholas Scherzer, Troy resident.
All my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for discussion. Councilman Pennington.
Mayor, I actually have another question for Brent that, that brought up, you know, after the residents spoke. I'm just wondering if, um, all the wells that are drilled up north, are they just regular wells, or is there any fracturing that's going on in Michigan as, as we know?
I'm by no means an expert, but this is the, this map, again, provided by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, or MDEQ. This is a high-volume hydraulic fracturing map. These are for active applications, an active permit since 2008. And I counted earlier today, I think there's 51 total wells that were related to fracturing in, in the state.
Okay.
And none of them were in Oakland County.
That's just one thing I'd want, like to know when we have our meeting, is, are any of those wells active fracturing? Because that's different than normal drilling. I think fracturing is a horizontal, a horizontal drill, and then they pump water and sand in there. It's different than a regular drill.
So the legend, and again, I'm not, I'm certainly not the expert here, but the legend is a combination. There's producing wells, active applications, active permits, plugging completed, and drilling completed. So they're in various stages of activity.
Okay. Councilman Teetz.
Just had a couple of questions regarding the, the planning commission meetings. Was there a discussion about the, the, the gas well at the MSU Extension Center?
Brief discussion.
A brief discussion?
They're, they're aware of it.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. And then, uh, who, who did they consult with that, that brought this about? Was this just something they read in the paper? Was this something? I guess I'm curious about what sort of research has been done.
I, I believe it was initiated by, uh, the, the coverage of, um, actions that communities in the area were taking related to oil and gas extraction, specifically Rochester Hills and Auburn Hills. That kind of spearheaded their efforts.
And then my, my last, my final question. So, so you're saying the DEQ is, is pro and, uh, water commissioner is con? Is that, is that the, the idea? Because I would think the DEQ, a government agency, would be neutral. At least I always assumed our great city council and, and our, and our paid staff was all neutral in their, in their views. Is, is the DEQ not neutral?
I think the word I use is differing.
Differing. Yeah.
I think what we're trying to do for a study session is, is bring all of the information that we possibly can bring to this issue so that we can make a good.
Yeah.
Constructive, um, decision. And we're looking for information from the DEQ and from the commissioner, the Oakland County Commissioner, that provide different viewpoints. I know they debate each other quite often in other forums. And, um, I, I want to thank the planning commission for, for, you know, trying to do what they thought was best for the city. But from, since I've gotten calls and, and talked to people about this, I think we all need to educate ourselves better before we make a decision. So unless there's other discussion from council, I'd like to move a resolution where a lot of our answers, your questions can be answered. Councilwoman Hoderick.
I appreciated the discussion about making sure we're business-friendly. And one of, one of the things I've discovered as I've attended events around the county and in the city with businesses is that they do appreciate the thoughtfulness of this municipality and all its work it does, whether it's safety prevention, the roads, or a topic such as this one. It's an opportunity to educate ourselves, I think, that we're looking at. And there's an expectation when we speak to residents and business leaders and, and owners, that we understand why we've made decisions, why we've taken action or not taken action. And there's nothing bad about that when, when you get out and talk to prospective, um, businesses or residents that are coming in. That's one of the positives of this city and its reputation, is that it proactively looks to understand and look out for the welfare of residents and the business community. And so as we proceed with that, I do think that's a great use of our time. And, and, and it's, it's something we need to do. We are getting, um, questions. I do get questions a lot, and I've been saying that I'm looking forward to becoming better educated as, as we move forward.
Thank you. I'll move the resolution that Detroit City Council schedules a joint meeting of the city council and planning commission to discuss proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the regulation of oil and gas facilities as requested by the management for September 14th, 2015, at 6 o'clock PM in the boardroom. Move by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we meet with the city council and planning commission on September 14th, 2015, at 6 o'clock in the boardroom. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. Motion passes. We look forward to that meeting on the 24th. Thank you for coming. Or 14th, September 14th. Next is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I will call on Tom Sawyer, Troy resident.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Sawyer signed up under items not on the agenda.
Okay. Sorry. Sorry, Tom, you'll have to stick with us for a little bit.
Sorry, I will.
No one has signed up.
I'm going to hurt me a lot, buddy.
We have no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. Board and committee appointments, there are no appointments this evening from the mayor position or city council. I will put into nomination for the local development finance authority, the LDFA. I will nominate Paul Huff for the term that expires 6/30/2019. And Nicholas Vitale for the term that expires 6/30/2019. I am going to wait and speak with Mr. Kitter before I place him in the nomination. Second is for. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we nominate Paul Huff and Nicholas Vitale for the local development finance authority, LDFA, for the terms that expire 6/30/2019. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Yes.
Motion passes. I would like to nominate for the planning commission Carlton Faison for the unexpiring term that was recently made available by the resignation of Thomas Stratt. And that term would expire 12/31/2017. Move by the chair and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we nominate Carlton Faison for the planning commission for the term that expires 12/31/2017. And I would like to indicate that Carlton is here this evening, and if I could ask him to stand, um, if anyone wishes to speak with him from council, his application is, is on the portal. And, uh, I'm not going to ask Carlton to stay all night, but he'd be more than willing to, to talk with you if you choose to. But thanks for coming this evening, Carlton.
Thank you.
Thank you. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, thank you, Carlton, for stepping up and, uh, wanting to serve. Thank you so much. I would also like to thank Tom Stratt. Tom has been on the planning commission for at least 12 years. He's at a architectural firm in Troy since, uh, I believe, 1972. So thank you to Tom. We will be presenting him with a service award soon. So thanks again to Tom Stratt. I don't have any other nominations this evening, and I understand there are no city council nominations this evening. So we will move to regular, uh, to I3, a request for closed session. We'd like to move that resolution this evening. Councilman Henderson.
Like to move I3 as printed.
Second. Moved by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilman Gottlieb, that we meet for closed session this evening as permitted by MCL 15.268E pending litigation, the City of Troy versus Grand Sacwa. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. I4 is the TAP grant presentation for the Trails and Pathways with an introduction by Kurt Plovenseep, the Public Works Manager. Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Um, we're back this month. As if, if you remember, in June, we kind of gave you an idea that we'd be back in July here to go over a resolution to procreate the funds for the TAP grant for the Trails and Pathways. Just a reminder that this trail is an 11-mile trail connecting Big Beaver to the Clinton River Trail in the northwest corner of the city. Tonight, we're going to concentrate our discussion on Segment 1, which is connecting the Clinton River Trail to Firefighters Park. With me from HRC, I have Jennifer Shahab. She's going to go over some of the details of the TAP grant. Apparently, it's not as easy as just putting your hand out. We're very glad to retain HRC on this project. If you remember, in June, we presented that we went through a vetting system and decided on HRC, and we're very happy with our, with our choice. So with that, Jennifer Shahab will go over the, some of the transportation alternative program details.
So the, the transportation alternatives program is referred to as the TAP. The projects typically funded through that are non-motorized, basically looking for an alternative method of transportation or enhancement types of projects. TAP projects run through the local agency program for MDOT. So there's some requirements or strings, if you will, attached to the money. Basically, you have to follow MDOT's guidelines. So you have six months from program application to bidding. So what we're looking at is submitting in a grant application in August, hopefully hearing by mid to late October, and then submitting for a bid letting either in April or May, depending on when we hear about the grant money. The award will be to the lowest qualified bidder. MDOT pre-qualifies, so there's no discussion on, on that on our end. Prevailing wages are, will be applied to the project, so the cost will be a little bit higher than standard local jobs. The grants amount, grant amounts are capped at the amount that you request. So if the construction cost comes in a little higher, the grant will not be a percentage of the construction cost. It'll be the capped amount that you receive. You will have a cost participation agreement with MDOT, so MDOT will administer the project, and then you'll get, there'll be reimbursement. ASHTO and the Michigan Manual for National Traffic Control Devices will apply, so all the state and federal standards will apply to the project. So, the next slide sort of goes through some of that. ASHTO design standards are 10-foot width with two-foot clearance on either side. Right now, you have eight-foot bike paths throughout the city, so you would have to build wider paths with this type of funding, and you'd have, like, you can see on Nottingham there, you have a path that doesn't have two feet of clearance. So, something like that that exists as those, on your 12-foot easements don't really apply to the ASHTO standards. Mid-block crossings, in this segment, the only mid-block crossing we would have would be at Coolidge. This is a picture of 14-mile road, the mid-block crossings that Claussen recently constructed. You don't have the traffic counts that Claussen does, so you wouldn't be looking at something this elaborate, but you will have to address how you're going to safely cross pedestrians across Coolidge. Like is stated, the Michigan Manual will apply. Wayfinding signage will have to be the size for vehicular traffic, so, so it won't be pedestrian-scale signage. And pavement markings, this is a picture of what a charrow looks like. Basically, this is where you have someone on your Class Three routes would be directional bicycle signage to make sure that you can route them through neighborhoods safely.
And again, just a reminder that we're not as fortunate as some of our neighboring communities like Rochester Hills with the abandoned rail right-of-way, so we will have several different classes of pathway going through the city to provide that connection. Class one being a dedicated pathway, similar to a sidewalk where it's off-street, it's a dedicated pathway. And then Class Three, which is your shared-use lane, just as Jennifer mentioned, the charrow. In segment one, we have Class One and Class Three routes. You can see circled is the Class One, which is the vast majority of the route. This is an example of what a dedicated pathway may look like with some wayfinding signage on, on the asphalt. Class Three would go through the neighborhoods connecting Firefighters Park to Beach Road. That was, looks something similar to that, where you would have the pavement markings along with some wayfinding signage directing people through the subdivisions using the street, sharing the lane with vehicular traffic. Back in June, we mentioned that we were going to meet out at Firefighters Park to consider several different routes. The Trails and Pathway Committee did meet. In fact, several of them are here tonight. We have some next assistants that are part of the project here. We also have Fred Phillips, Tom Crent, and Don Sherman are all here tonight to support this project. During our discussions, we, we went out, we walked each route and to identify what's the best way to connect Firefighters Park with the rest of the trail. We actually decided on two different ideas. One was to have a through passage through, a through path through the park, and then was another pathway to actually connect the park, to get the, get the participants down into the park and potentially create a trailhead. This is a view looking south, and this where a potential trailhead could be at Firefighters Park welcoming participants to come on the trail. There is an existing 14-foot drain crossing right now that would be utilized. Again, this is, this is an example of the ASHTO standards, so we do have this currently, so costs are minimal. We'd be crossing the disc golf course and going alongside it, and then going along the pond and some woods, which is a nice natural amenity. And then finally making the connection to the neighborhood, and beyond this connection would be the second segment, if you will. So, the through path is, also has some constraints or some things to consider. We do cross the Rouge, Rouge River, and there are some additional wetlands that would require boardwalk to go through. So, we came to the cost estimates. The pedestrian bridge that cost the, the Rouge River was approximately $130,000. The boardwalk at a tune of about $300,000. We did investigate other types of boardwalks to use in Troy's trail and pathway. We looked at fiberglass, we've looked at prefab concrete. All of them were, were pretty cost prohibitive at this point, so we did estimate at a just standard wood boardwalk with railing. And then just over $100,000 in pavement markings and wayfindings. These are just some of the, the large items pulled out of the estimate. Of course, there would be tree removal and, and other things. Originally, we projected a 50-50 match. I, I do want to make it clear that TAP grant is a 80-20, is required at 80-20. However, talking with SEMCOG and Michigan Department of Transportation, because this is a three-year project, they recommended that we have a little bit higher match to help us get funding in the future for the same project. Unfortunately, we're all, we are over that $1 million mark, so we will be reducing our, our match from 50% to approximately 46%. And then Jennifer can go again over the detail and the timeline for the TAP grant.
So, today you have before your resolution, that resolution will be submitted on August 3rd with the grant application. Following that, we would have a public engagement period, and, and part of that has started, just some discussions with Auburn Hills and Walsh College and some of the other partners along the route. So, we do have some letters of support that will help in the grant application. We should hear about the third week of October to the end of October on the grant award, and we'll be able to submit for the April bid letting. If we hear later than October 29th, then it would end up being a May bid letting. But there's a six-month process for MDOT from once you submit your plans and start the process to when they actually open bids. And then we would be beginning construction next summer, late summer.
Very good. Any questions from council for staff?
It's good.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to move, Councilwoman Hoderick.
Resolve that the City Council for the City of Troy, Oakland County, Michigan hereby authorizes the City of Troy's Parks, Streets, and Drains divisions to pursue a transportation alternative program grant application for an amount not to exceed $500,000 in local match for the first phase of a three-phase project to provide a non-motorized pathway network from Troy City Hall to the Clinton River Trail.
Moved by Councilwoman Hoderick and supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we approve I four as read this evening. Discussion. Sounds good. Looking forward to the start of a great project. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for all your hard work. Next is I five, a standard purchasing resolution number one, and I will point out that there is a yellow sheet on the council table that is a correction to the resolution printed in the agenda, and welcome Steve Vandette, City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item I five is a contract award and budget amendment for the Waddles Road Asphalt Overlay Project. The project, project includes overlaying three miles of Waddles Road from Coolidge to Rochester, and it also includes crooks from Big Beaver to Banmore and the intersection of Coolidge and Square Lake. Three bids were received on July 8th. The low bid, $2,183,316.97, was submitted by Proline Asphalt, who have done several projects for us in the past, and they've all, they've all gone well. The last one was a mill and overlay project on Elliott and Spencer Streets in 2013. The budget estimate for, for this project is 1.95 million. There are a couple of factors that contributed to this project coming in over budget. First was higher construction costs. We've seen higher costs this year due to an improving economy and higher construction demand. We also added a bypass lane on the west, westbound Waddles at Lawson Street during the design phase. This is located just east of I 75 on the westbound side of, of Waddles, and DPW had requested this due to lots of cars going off on the shoulder and going around cars, making a left turn. So, it was requested that we add this bypass lane. Also, we're adding, we're closing in two sidewalk gaps on Waddles, on the north side of Waddles between Livinoy and Rochester, and that will result in a continuous sidewalk from Livinoy to Rochester. And finally, we're also using a higher-grade asphalt mix for better performance and reduce maintenance costs in the future. When we add 4% for inspection and testing and 10% contingency, we are at an estimated project cost of 2.49 million. City administration recommends that the project be awarded to Proline for their bid of $2,183,316.97, and that the capital budget for major streets be amended in the amount of $540,000. The project would start in August and be completed in October. We think it'll be completed well before that, assuming that we get good weather and don't run into any problems. We talked with the contractor this afternoon, Proline, and they will start on the west mile of Waddles first, and there is a good chance that this mile will get done before school starts. But in any case, we will coordinate with the schools, with Troy High and Bowlin Middle School, to minimize any traffic problems that might arise if the project runs longer than expected on that westerly mile. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Thanks again. Councilman Gottlieb?
I'd like to move forward resolution 201507, be it resolved that Troy City Council awards Contract 15-8, Waddles Mill and HMA Overlay to Proline Asphalt Paving, 11-797 29-mile road, Washington Township, Michigan, 48095, for their low bid total of $2,183,316.97. Be it further resolved that the award is contingent upon submission of proper contract and bid documents, including bonds, insurance certificates, and specified requirements, and if additional work is required, such additional work is authorized in an amount not to exceed 10% of the total project cost. Be it finally resolved that Troy City Council amends the 2016 major street budget to transfer additional funds in the amount of $540,000 to the capital budget. A copy of the bid tabulation shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. Did you want me to amend that to be I five as printed on the addendum?
Please.
Let's amend that to I five as printed. Support?
Thank you. Thank you. Moved by Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve I five as printed on the yellow sheet this evening, which is a correction to the printed agenda. Discussion. Councilwoman Hoderick.
Just real quickly, Mr. Vandette mentioned coordinating with Troy High, Bowlin Park Middle School, and for those of us who are Bemis Elementary alumni, I know that you meant to include Bemis as well, if anybody's listening and wondering. These are the kinds of questions we get, so I'm just trying to make sure that folks know it's covered. Thanks.
Thank you. I think everyone's looking forward to Waddles Road getting, getting fixed. Thank you. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. I six is a resolution concerning fireworks with an introduction by City Attorney Bloom and Gary, Mayor, Chief of Police.
Yes, Mayor, and I, I'm, I'm going to cover it, and then Chief Mayor is obviously here, as well as Mr. Roberts, if there are any questions for any of them. This is brought to us as a result of a consensus from City Council that there were some residents who had contacted you with a great number of concerns, and these are concerns since the fireworks law was amended in 2011, and, and then it was amended in 2013, but there are still some issues, and it's causing some concerns to be raised in the City of Troy. So, we did draft a resolution for your consideration, and this resolution is encouraging the state legislature to, to revisit and revise the current state law regarding fireworks, and especially to allow local units of government to carry out the obligation to preserve the quality of life and safety that its citizens expect. And also, the resolution requires the submission of this to all elected officials should you pass it. And Mayor, if I just may add also, I know that this is something that's happening in many other communities. I am on a municipal attorney's list serve, and as of this afternoon, there were at least 136 communities that were passing resolutions concerning the fireworks laws.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that for us. I, just personally, I, this covers what I was looking for. I know we sent one in 2012 that was more specific, but I think this is what we need right now. Did anyone have any questions for the chief, or the fire department, or the city attorney regarding the resolution? Councilman Henderson?
Move I six, resolution concerning fireworks as printed.
Moved by Councilman Henderson and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Campbell, that we approve I six, a resolution strongly asking Lansing to do something about fireworks. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Hopefully, they'll do something. I seven is ballot language for the Library Milage Question for November 3rd, 2015, the city general election, with an introduction to start with City Manager Brian Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The, over the past year, we, as in staff at all levels and the attorney's office, have collaborated with the council, community members, as well as everyone internally, to best determine the course of action for the, a recommendation to the council for future library funding. And after numerous dialogues and connections and discussions at night or during the day, we propose a funding strategy that includes a request of .7 mills. I can tell you, and I think the memo discusses it at, at length, is it started with the AAA bond rating discussion and how important committed funding sources are. As, as a component of the AAA bond rating, I'm not saying it's everything, but it certainly is a component, as stated by Bobby Benzinski. And then the financial ideas team that we put together that looked at the budget first at the initial meetings, and then we added a library component and broke the FIT team members up into groups and brought them back to discuss what a course of action would be that would meet everyone's needs. And then we did it again with the FIT team in a council study session. So, we come before you tonight after much dialogue and deliberation and presentations on the financial situation to request the strategy that includes a recommendation to the council to put before the voters a .7 mil renewal for five years, and it would also, it's not on the ballot, but it's our strategy based on the discussions to use the library fund balance for material purchases, materials, that's the books and the CDs and, maybe they don't have CDs anymore. Yeah, they do. Anyway, all the collection materials, and then use the capital fund of the city for any physical needs of the library building, electrical upgrades, windows leaking, you know, that, those kind of capital needs if, if needed. So, that's our recommendation. You have the full memo in front of you, which outlines the process that we've taken, and we feel very confident in what we're presenting in front of you in terms of the facts.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I don't think, no matter how this turns out, I don't think anybody could say anything bad about the process. I think you've done everything that you could possibly do to get as much input as you could to make a good decision. So, I think this council appreciates that, and we appreciate FIT members stepping forward from the community to be part of this. If you'd like to move this resolution. Does someone like to move this resolution? Councilman Gottlieb?
We don't have an update on this one, do we?
I think it's as-is.
Move forward with I-7, ballot language for library millage question, November 3rd, 2015, city general election. Do you want it read into the record?
As printed would be fine in this one, since it has not been modified.
As printed.
Support?
Moved by Councilman Gottlieb and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick that we approve I-7, the ballot language for the library millage question of November 3rd, 2015, city general election. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda. City staff has asked that we pull J-7 from the agenda this evening, so I will pull J-7, and we will postpone that item until further notice. Any other consent agenda items that council wishes to pull? Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move the consent agenda, all items not removed for approval.
Except J... Except?
Yes.
Support?
Moved by Councilman Pennington, supported by Councilman Gottlieb, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of J-7, which will be considered at another date. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Gottlieb?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved, except J-7 has been pulled for a future date. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items that are unsubmitted this evening. So now I will call on Tom Sawyer, Troy resident, for public comment for items not on the agenda
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
I am the Tom Sawyer from Troy, Michigan. I am here tonight because I wanted to, one, offer you a couple of things in my travels in the last month. I was in Hannibal, Missouri, and I happened to stop in a lovely town called Troy, Missouri. So I wanted to offer a couple of things to you. Troy, Missouri is about 196 years old, so they pre-do us in a lot of ways. And, but I thought it was interesting, because I stopped at the Chamber of Commerce, and I did see the mayor of Troy, Missouri, and they were very, very gracious to me in giving me some things. So I'd like to present to you, one, live, work, and play in Troy, Missouri. Now, I have to say that Troy, Missouri is a town of about 16,000, okay? So they don't have as many people as we do, okay? But they've been around a lot, a lot longer. And this was another book that I was given, and this was celebrating the 775 years of Troy, Missouri, in 1994. So I'm going to present that to you, too, for a while, so you can look at it. But this book here was very, very interesting, and I would hope that you and council take a look at this and see what you might be able to muster from this, because they really did well. So I'm going to give you that for a while. Then, through the, in the chamber, they have a game that I thought you might be interested in, and they gave it to me. So I'm going to offer this to you, and I will not ask for this back. I would ask that possibly you would give this to the library after you all play it once.
Thank you.
Well, I thank you, and then I wanted to say, too, that I was kind of sorry that we couldn't get together, Mayor, and to use one of your flag poles for the city flag, and I'm sorry, Brian, that we could not work that out. I'm hoping that possibly in the future, we could do that, and for my great city of the city of Hannibal, Missouri, which I go to all the time because of my lovely name. I thank you very much.
Thank you for the gifts, Tom.
You are welcome. Would you like me to hand it over to you?
Could you give them to the clerk, please?
Sure.
And we'll make sure that the game gets to the library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There are no council referrals this evening, so we'll move to council comments. Are there any council comments? Mr. Sheriff Searle, did you sign up to speak?
I signed up for the agenda, the agenda. Just have one request.
Any objection to...
No.
Please.
Good evening. I was listening to you intently on your I-5, the improvements on Waddles Road. I'd like to make one request. Could you folks please get together with the County Road Commission, and maybe Rochester Hills, and take a good, hard look at South Boulevard and Rochester Roads? That northbound lane is ridiculous.
We'll make some council comments here, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Funny you should bring that up, Mr. Sheriff Searle, but we're at council comments, and I think I'll, if council doesn't mind, I'll ask City Manager Kishnik to give us a brief update on South Boulevard.
Luckily, I just found the email quickly, so I could have used a little time, but no, that's okay. So, and please don't hold me to these numbers. I don't have them in front of me, but the legislature passed another 200 or so, $260 million to funnel through the counties, cities, and villages, cities, yeah, and villages to provide extra funding as a one-time deal that, quite frankly, none of the municipalities should have expected, right? So we didn't, definitely didn't budget it. And so the city, this came out last Thursday from the state of Michigan. City of Troy will be receiving $839,000. Road Commission will be receiving a large sum. I don't want to, I don't know. And Rochester Hills will be receiving $732,000. So, Mayor, I don't know if it was about two, three weeks ago, I was bored one day, and I sent an email to the County Road Commission, Dennis Kohler, as well as Brian Barnett, saying, hey, as I look out and I see traffic jammed on Big Beaver, it doesn't make me happy, but I know there's infrastructure progress, and the end is in sight. I hope you guys are thinking about the number-one road that this council's been talking about for two years, and the city of Troy's been trying to get Rochester Hills to contribute because it's a county road with two jurisdictions, as you know. And just putting you guys on notice, then this comes through unbeknownst to any of us, Dennis Kohler and the County Road Commission sends an email out on Thursday or Friday, I don't remember which, Thursday, I think, saying they know we have the money, $800,000. They know Rochester Hills has the $700,000. They have the money. They'll split it in thirds, and we'll do South Boulevard. Okay, so, yeah, there's more to the story. So I slowly responded within 10 minutes and said, yes, the city of Troy is in. Obviously, it has to go to this council. I cannot just commit, but I felt I was on safe ground with all the other discussions. So then Rochester Hills did not commit, but said they would get right back to the county and I to let us know, and that was Thursday of last week. So, you know, and I'm not here to say, there's been no real determination how far we can go with the monies that they're talking about or what it's going to be, but our goal is to get, and this council knows because they say it all the time, our goal is to get something done on South Boulevard, because it is the worst road, but it is a border road, and it is a county road. So.
Thank you. The short answer is that we're doing everything that we can possibly do to try and get South Boulevard completed, and I even told Mr. Kishnik yesterday or today that I will be writing a letter soon to Mayor Barnett from Rochester Hills, asking him to please partner with us and get this project done. So I think you have a commitment from this council that we're doing everything that we possibly can, because we recognize it's the worst road in Troy. When you get off M-59 at Rochester and enter Troy, it is a gateway to our city. That intersection is embarrassing, and, and I think almost dangerous. So any other council comments this evening?
That's a good one.
Councilwoman Hoderick?
Speaking of the construction, I just, huge accolades to staff and the contractor that worked at truly breakneck speed on Big Beaver. It opened today, and we were able to complete what we need to do on Big Beaver for a while, and appreciate the patience of residences and businesses with that. We did a lot of work last year, and this, this is really just the cherry on top to get this done. I know the police, DPW, staff, council members, we were all getting questions, but it was the right thing to do. Thanks for the great reaction when the money came through to get this together, and many thanks to the contractor. If we could all take a minute and frequent as many establishments on Big Beaver as possible that, you know, had difficulty with attracting traffic in because of the traffic jams, that that would be the next thing that we could do to, to really follow through on the project. But Troy Roads Rock is starting to really be just not a slogan, but a reality as we keep working, and we're with you on the South Boulevard.
Any other council comments? Any comments regarding the reports in the agenda packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, so we will adjourn for closed session in the boardroom in five minutes. Thank you for coming this evening.